My burnt yoga burn, I don't know, she said I was only one person.
Did she forget to post that it was canceled?
Well, she wouldn't.
Good evening, everyone, it's October 3rd, we're here for a regularly scheduled school board meeting, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a pretty full agenda tonight. We'll start off with public comment. Anybody has a comment they can approach? Good, okay, moving on.
I have an announcement to make, unfortunately, I need to resign from the school board. It's a personal reason. I want to thank all you guys for
You're making credit.
For all the stuff we've been through. And I think the school is on a great track. Susan, glad you're here. And I will be watching, and I'm not dying, by the way.
Okay. That's good news, Al.
But I need to do this, and I need to do it effectively right now. So, I am going to leave, thank you all.
Thank you so much, Al.
You can.
Yeah, yeah.
Did I get a hug from you, Mike?
Taylor, you do not have to.
You're welcome. This is the best one. Thank you so much.
Al, it is a pleasure working with you as well.
See you, guys.
Thank you. We have somewhat more of a statement at a following meeting, but I just want to personally thank Al for all that he's done, we came on the board at the same time. We did go through a lot, and we were in a lot different place four years ago. You know, I don't think without Al's good guidance and help that, you know, we'd be where we are now with the building, and he was critical to that, and in other efforts that we did, so. More to come later when we digest it, but I just wanted to thank him publicly. If anybody else wants to speak.
I just, I guess I have to just kind of digest it a little bit.
I'm grateful for the opportunity that I've had to work with him over these years. And I, as Elizabeth said, I'm kind of struck dumb, which is a rare occurrence for me. So, you know, like I think it makes sense to gather comments later on, and thank you for your service, Al.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on, we're going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to, we'll get to the school committee reports later, but Jamie has a presentation for us on the co-op Oyster River District lacrosse team. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, thank you.
You could buy one this week?
Yep, school store closes on the 15th, so. I think you all have the packet with the agreement for Oyster River, so I'll just kind of give you a review of what we've been through. It's been almost a year, maybe more than a year, we've been talking with Oyster River about lacrosse, and we did a survey to our students last year, and the numbers that came back, they wanted us to do, we wanted to do boys and girls, and they only needed one of the genders, and we just said that we wanted to provide the opportunity for both, and it just didn't work. So, after they went through the season, they realized that they needed both, so we surveyed again our students, and still had a good number. We also looked at, is this going to take away from the spring sports that we already have? Because that's crucial in a small school, you don't want to be spread too thin, especially if we're going to send our athletes to another school, and it's going to cancel the sports that we have already existing in our school. And that wasn't the case, so the people that signed up for lacrosse, we're not baseball players, we're not softball players, we're not track athletes, so it ended up, you know, working well. We're just going to provide more opportunities for our students, and not take away from the opportunities that we have. And Oyster River looked at it as, you know, they needed it to help, they were running a varsity only, or they were trying to run JV and varsity with a lot of swing players. So, it's not going to displace anybody from their district as well. So, I met with the athletic director a few times, we went back and forth, we came up with the agreement that you have in front of you, and it has already been approved by their school board. It went through, you know, myself, and to the principal, and the superintendents of both districts, and it got support there, school board approval from Oyster River a couple of weeks back, and now we're here for questions.
Just quickly, how do the kids get back and forth from Newmarket to Oyster River?
Just like any other, they have to get themselves to practice. Our swim team already does that, our football team does that with Epping, our hockey team does that with Portsmouth, so, you know, sometimes our school teams practice at Beanie, you know, across town, so, you know, they have to get themselves there, not any different than a, you know, a basketball team that practices seven and nine at night. So, they just have to make those plans, it's worked well, a lot of card pooling, and, you know, stuff like that.
Jamie, I know that the last time you were here, or one of the last times, we were talking about adding the swimming program, and I know that we've had students come in with success on that, and I was just wondering, from your perspective as athletic director, how that relationship was going between the two districts and that regarding?
It's been great, Oyster River's been very good, you know, they accommodate us very well. Andy, their AD has been great to work with, and, you know, they welcome us. So, you know, there hasn't been any conflict at all. So, and I know talking to, Taylor maybe can answer that better than I can.
I love swimming with Oyster River, they're so welcoming, I didn't feel like there was any disconnect when I was swimming with other teams, so.
But my question was kind of self-serving, because I had to take Taylor to the part of the morning practices at UNA, so. She's got her license now, we'll all be good, but I'll thank you.
The practice times will be better than the swim practice times, so.
You've got to see when you're playing lacrosse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for, if there aren't any other questions, I really thank you for doing all the background work.
You're welcome.
There's a lot of work to get to this point, you know, and so, but it's going to be awesome for the kids.
And I think that the cost is minimal for our, I think, we're talking about a, you know, a player usage fee, like we have, and we have that for hockey, we have that, I think they were asking a hundred dollars per player. So, you know, football, our football players pay, our hockey players play. You know, so it's more of, you know, just, they have the uniforms, they have the turf field, they have, you know, the existing goals and everything, so it's just helping out with transportation, officials' fees, coaches' fees.
And Jamie, if there's someone who has a financial need for the hundred dollars, do we have options for the assistance?
Yeah, yeah, we have ways to fundraise and to scholarship players, and, you know, we help that out. We've done payment plans with hockey, you know, so they can do installments and stuff like that, so. You know, we never want finances to come in in the way of an opportunity from a student athlete, or any student.
Yeah, if there's no further comment, you may have a motion to approve the Oyster River Newmarket Cooperative Girls and Boys Lacrosse Proposals.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
Second.
Second.
Any further comment? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you, Jamie.
That'll be fun.
Yes, it will, it will.
And it's just more opportunity for our kids, which is excellent.
Yeah, they're really excited about it. I did a unit in phys ed class last week, and we even have more kids that are excited than, you know, so I think it's something that would be, it's a different type of athlete than a baseball player or a softball player, so. It's going to open up.
Oh, I think lacrosse players are crazy.
Yeah.
Have you ever had the shark bite? They take the lacrosse stick and they do it on your arm?
You know, it's, I probably would have played in that instead of baseball, except that might be heresy in Newmarket, baseball's pretty, if they had it in high school.
Yeah, like I said, it's.
It's a sport, you can kind of practice on your own.
Right.
Yeah, it's a growing sport, it's really coming up in, you know, in New Hampshire, so, and all around the country, so. Just, it's another, it gives another group of athletes an opportunity, so that's what we're excited about.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie, very much.
All right, let's go back and cover those school board committee reports first. I don't have, last time I reported on the building committee, that we had a, we had a meeting that was canceled. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 15th, where we'll take up, among other topics, a look at what the existing furniture needs are, add alternates, bringing that list back out, so we can begin that discussion on, you know, making sure we have our priorities right there. We'll be reviewing the status of the construction budget as well. So, other than that, I have nothing further to report, everything's going along.
Mike, we had talked about maybe having a joint meeting, is that then?
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about that, I wanted to touch base with Susan to see where, you know.
I just want to make sure I didn't miss it.
First, because we do have a meeting that week, and it may make sense, we could do one or two things if it makes, you know, if it does ultimately make sense, is either move it, the building committee meeting, you know, maybe an hour before this one.
Right.
I want to, I want to just check with people to see if they didn't be available before I commit to that, right? So, but, good idea, Kim, I'll look into it, it would be ideal, because then we don't have to sort of go over the same ground twice.
Right, right.
Good thought. All right, any other committee reports?
Nope.
Budget, nothing? Okay, all right, the next item on the agenda is the, it comes off, excuse me, it comes off our retreat that we had, was it last week? I can't even remember, was it last week? All right, so, we meet a lot. So, the gist of what we discussed at our retreat last time was forming and securing or solidifying our board and superintendent relationship, because we feel that it's important that we work as a collaborative team. This isn't, this isn't a Socratic exercise, where Susan is questioned, like I was in my law school days, that's no fun, I know that. This is, this is, we want to develop a culture of, and we have it, I think, in parts now, of collaboration, and really mindfulness of focusing on the primary goal of student growth and development and achievement. And it sounds pretty self-evident, you know, when you talk about these things, you know, you might say, of course we do, but we need to constantly remind ourselves, because, you know, in the day-to-day, or the week-to-week, things that come before the board, we can get distracted, we can get off that mission, we can, you know, when things come up. And I thought it was important that we refocus, and that's really going to be just one of our school board goals, is sort of staying in our lanes as a school board, with the superintendent, supporting the superintendent. And I thought this gets to the article, that it would be beneficial to keep us in that mindset to read a scholarly, or discuss a scholarly article every week, so you'll see in your materials a proposed sort of, you know, foundational document in terms of relationship, but also a list of articles that we're going to read every week, and those articles are in the materials.
How about every month?
I mean, every two weeks, every two weeks, at every, at every board meeting, so. Everybody's, everybody's an owner of an article from now through the end of December, where we'll reassess and see if we're meeting our goals that we've set for ourselves on that front. The first article I am owner of, I guess for this week, is called Finding the Right Fit, it's in the materials. I just thought we could just go over what we each took away from it. From a high level, I took away that district leadership really matters. I mean, and obviously, teachers matter too, but without good, having good teachers and good direction, good leadership, you're not going to get to where you want to be. And it sounds, again, it sounds rather self-evident, but we need to work collectively as a team. We need to provide the resources, the district leadership, and the direction, and so teachers can do what they do best, and our, you know, having a good time teaching, and our students are getting, are achieving. One thing, another thing I took from this article is that, as a board, it seems like we ought to have the courage to measure ourselves by that end, you know? I mean, that's really what we're all about, I mean, and I think as we go forward with Susan's guidance, when we get into visioning in a year or so, that we will fully set the compass towards that. A lot of the things in this article are, were geared towards urban school districts, but they fully apply, they fully apply here. You know, and, you know, one of the things that we've experienced, I think, as a board, and I wish Al was here for this too, because he was integral to it, was building consensus, okay? And including the community. When we went through that whole facilities thing, we really started from the bottom, we started from, we brought people in from all areas and all interests, and we just heard, we just listened to what folks, what was important to people. And by doing that, we started to build a relationship, we realized by listening that we weren't that far apart fundamentally, in terms of what was important to people, and what people wanted, and that everybody really had good intentions. So, that was a good model, and this article talks about that role that the school board has. And with that, I think we've been busy, we've been working hard, the building will be done in the spring, but I think part of our effort will be to sort of refocus on that. Susan can't do it all, we can, I mean, we know the community, we can get out there and do that, so that's another thing I took away. Sort of a, there's many things, but one thing, continuity, to the best that we can control that, or allow it to happen with a superintendent is critical. We've been through many over the past, what, 15 years? And it's difficult to do, to have any continuity of programs. If you start new initiatives, yet you have new leadership come in all the time, it's very disruptive. This article says disastrous, I might not disagree with that. Now, superintendent may win the lottery and be off on his or her way, and those are things out of our control, or they may, they may just want another opportunity somewhere else. But I think there are plenty of stuff that we can do, as outlined in this article, to make it, you know, make it an environment where, you know, it continues to be respectful, cooperative, collaborative, not confrontational, that we offer competitive pay and benefits. So, we've at least done all we can, you know, to make it an environment where a superintendent would want to stay. Because I think that gives us the best chance of hitting our mission, our top priority of, you know, student growth and achievement. I'm almost, I need a glass of water, I'm talking too much, so I'll give somebody else a. So, what did everybody else think of the article?
Well, I actually shared it with a couple of my board member friends. I loved it, and I thought Susan had picked it, I'm like, this is great, this is a great article, Mike's like, well, yeah, I picked it up. But I liked, I just, it explained us, it explained our board, how we need to work together as a team, follow our leader, provide our leader with everything that she needs to help our community, become the student achievers that we know they can be, and to encourage them to be better than what they are now. So, I liked, I liked the article.
I was struck by the fact that, I believe they surveyed some school board members, and how they thought they were doing just great, and that the structure was wonderful, but that there seems to be a disconnect between how a lot of school boards see themselves and how the superintendents see the system working, whereas they see it as being, having a lot more problems. Now, it might depend on the specific structure, but I think that speaks to this idea that we will get further if we work in a collaborative way, as opposed to an adversarial way. So, that was, that struck me.
I was also struck by the fact that the challenges that we have had are ones that other boards have had. So, it's not a matter of us being so unique that we created things, these things happen all the time. It's how do we address them when they arise, or how do we, how are we proactive to avoid them? You know, in terms of having the six-person team, including the superintendent in that team, and really striving to focus on what's best for the kids in the end of the day. And that every decision that is made, every minute in meeting time is spent towards that end, is the most important thing. And I think, one thing that always hits me whenever we do this type of work, is we have such an amazing opportunity. And, you know, we don't want to be the ones to mess it up. So, whatever it takes for me not to do that, I'll try my best.
Well, it's, because you, as I was reading it, you realize we were so wrapped up in this building thing for so long that we did, we got lost, and now we have to find our way back to what we want to be doing, and that's making Newmarket.
And I think, you know, piggybacking what Mike started, from the groundwork with the foundation that was set, I think we are really primed and ready, because the buildings are happening, they're almost done, people are seeing it, people are excited. Now, it is time for us to say, okay, the ship is moving towards what's going on in those buildings. And these are the ways, these are the pieces that are going on this foundation that we've built, bringing in people who have helped us along the way to get us where we can be. It's an exciting time.
Yeah, and I would just add to this that lots of good things have been happening too in the buildings all along, of course they have.
Yeah, yeah.
They certainly have, so I don't want to be, you know, under represent that at all. But I would just say that from a board's perspective, I feel a sense of optimism, but I also feel a sense of lost time, you know, that, but we can't turn back the clock. What's, you know, it's like the second, what's the second best data time to plant a tree, right? You know, today, so I think that's where we're headed. Overall, I think we just need to keep attention on it, you know, this is not our, this is our treat, and bring it next week, and I think it's something, you know, through the end, you know, this process will never end, but I think by December, we're going to be a lot further along in sort of, in terms of culturally bringing this along.
And just having the conversations about it is so important. Not assuming that I understand what my role really was, or is, or what it's supposed to be, but reconfirming it and showing it in different ways is really going to help me.
Right, great.
So, thank you, Mike.
Susan, would you have any thoughts?
No, I thought it was a well-written article, you know, that kind of covered all the bases, you know, talked about challenges and different dynamics on the school board and the relationships. What I really appreciated was towards the end of the article, where they provided a synopsis on the rules in a very, just very simple way, you know, that I think is easy to understand, and I think to the extent that we're able to, you know, have clear understandings, and common understandings about, you know, who's doing what, it just helps us to work better and remain more focused on, you know, what I believe is our primary goal, which is, you know, focusing on student learning. So, I'm very excited, I think this is a wonderful time to be here in Newmarket, and as we start to turn the corner and be able to refocus ourselves, it's just a perfect time to revisit kind of ground rules and, you know, our structures and the ways that we interact with each other, so that we can make sure that we're moving forward in the most efficient way. So, I really appreciated the article, and found in my lived experience that a lot of this has held true, you know? I've worked with over, you know, over 50 different board members in the course of my time at my prior job, and the dynamics on the board really have an impact on what you're able to do for kids, so.
Yes.
You know, I think it captured that well.
Thank you, Taylor, I forgot your report.
Yeah, so Student Council, SALT, National Honor Society, and Interactivist Holding, they're actually going trigger treating, or not trigger canning, I should say, Halloween night, October 30th, to collect food cans for the local Newmarket Food Drive, so make sure you have your cans ready, so that when they come by. Student Council is also holding a soft drive through October, the end of October. So, sports, Unified Soccer, they had a game, but it was canceled today. Their next game is October 17th versus Albion High School, and it's away. Boys Varsity Soccer, they had a game today, Sunapee. Last time I checked, they were winning, which was really exciting. Girls Varsity, they also had a game against Sunapee today, and they won, which was cool, because last time in the season they lost, so they kind of had a comeback. And then Co-Adversity Cross Country has a meet this Friday, October 4th, and it's away at Hillsborough during high school at 4:00 PM. And the Blue Devils Varsity Football, its next game is October 4th, it's at 7:00 PM, versus Laconia High School, it's away. And the last thing, we had a fire drill today, it ran pretty smoothly, so, yeah, that's all I have.
Great, and I know you have work to do, so you can, homework. So, let's see.
Thank you.
We are next up, student county girls.
Yes, I think they're in your packet, I think. I also took the liberty, and I'll pass these out too, of taking the board goals and summarizing them all on one page, and providing a similar format for each piece, and, you know, so you may want to take a moment to review that. I attempted, however imperfectly, to create alignment between your goals and my goals, and of course I have some goals that are really focused towards, you know, what we're doing, you know, on the ground with teaching and learning. So, I plan on sharing your goals and mine with staff, you know, tomorrow, in my superintendent's corner, so everyone is aware of what we're going to be focusing on this year. So, I would entertain any questions, feedback, suggestions?
I liked them a lot, Susan, you know, I think they're very effective, and having the action plan in place, it gives us something to focus on, and sort of know where you're going, and that's helpful for me.
Yeah, I thought the same way, I liked, they were very concise. They, see, I wrote down all the smart, specific, measurable, acceptable, realistic, and time-bound. I think you hit all those marks. think you hit all those marks. And I think it's, I think it's good. We, it's refreshing to have gone through these and kind of be on the same page. It's a good direction, so.
Again, it just reminds us what our roles are and how to stay in our lane.
And I think we got under action items approval of these, so we can wait till then. So next up was, I think, a building finance update.
I'm looking for you tonight, too. Apologies, I couldn't get it to you ahead of time, but I'll give you a moment to take a look.
I don't know which way.
It's not in your packet. Yeah. I'll just give you a moment to look it over before I begin. Does anyone want me to work through?
Yes, please.
Please.
Okay. So what this document attempts to do is to summarize the three primary funding sources that have been used in order to support the work that's taken place on the buildings, both the construction and some facility upgrades. So there's three primary sources, as I understand it. One is the bond money, so your, you know, capital project fund. Then there was an infrastructure grant that the facilities director wrote that helped us to be able to take some targeted expenses associated with safety and security at the two schools and siphon those expenses off against this grant. And then there are impact fees. My understanding of that is that the town accumulates impact fees when folks engage in construction around the community. And the purpose of the fees is to be able to help offset some kind of ramp-up costs associated with growth in the community. So those are the three sources, different funds, that have, in combination, been used to support, you know, the construction project. So I put them in the three buckets on the sheet so that it would be, you know, clear that there's three different revenue streams. In terms of the bond money, there were some additional unanticipated revenues that have been taken in to kind of enhance the amount of money available to spend. One of them was E-rate, and the $48,000, I think, Mike, perhaps you can, it was some other reimbursement-type expense. It's just not coming to my mind.
Was it maybe the lights?
I don't think so.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't think of it at the moment either. Yeah?
There were so many things, trying to remember them all with all these numbers. So in combination, as a result, you know, of those resources, we have $39,000, $39,031,283 available to spend. And so at this point, you know, with all of the things taken into consideration, all the obligations that we have right now, and a few items that we know are kind of in the queue that need to be done between now and the end of the project, we have $38,972.95 left in that bucket. The infrastructure grant money has been spent out, so the total amount of money we received in that, for that grant, was $441,728. And then we received some money from the, I guess, through the town for impact fees last year in the amount of $226,783.97. So again, those monies were used to, you know, pay for some of the construction work that's taken place. So if I was going to give the kind of summary, at this point, we have, again, just south of $39,000 left in proceeds remaining for the project. And I think the work that we have in front of us is to discuss, you know, how whatever resources may be available to us might be spent between now and the end of the construction project. And with resources that we haven't accessed yet, would we want to put forth a warrant article with those additional resources in order to do work that was not, not in the original scope of work, but was work that was defined in case there was money that was remaining. So I'm just going to speak now to that. So for potential additional revenue sources, as of the first, you know, of this month, we have bond interest that has been earned on the proceeds that have been invested of about $650,000. There's also impact fees for FY '20. So last year, you had, you requested some before Lisa left. She had petitioned the town for $57,238. And then in the, there's a contingency that's still left in Ekman's contract. It will, according to Greg, every dime of that will be used. We haven't finished the project. We still have a whole other section. As you know, we're working on the roof and the middle section of the building right now. And in my conversation with him today, he felt that that would be expired. But I thought, in case somebody asked, they do have a little bit of contingency, so folks don't have to feel too nervous that there's only $38,000 with the amount of construction we have left. There's also a column in here that's called projected. And those are things that are on the immediate horizon, that are scheduled to be spent, but we haven't issued a PO, and we don't have a contract in place right this minute for them. And so at the bottom of the page, what I did is I outlined for you what the items are that relate to the amount of money here, okay?
Okay.
So if you see under, it says projected expenses for construction services and fees, if you look across the line, you'll see $30,000 in the report. What that is for is door locks and hardware, and that was approved already, but we just don't have a contract and the PO hasn't been issued yet. Once that does, that will go into the encumbrance column. Under FFNE, so the line beneath that, you'll see $51,500. That is potential projected expenses. And what that includes is $7,000 for appliances, a scoreboard for the elementary school, $1,500 for that, $35,000 in furniture for the high school, and then some money for shelving and storage. So that, those items total up to $51,500. Again, we need the furniture. We need, you know, we need to move forward with that, but we have not issued a purchase order for that. And then under the line of contingency, there's about $100,000 in unassigned change orders that Greg said, again, you know, that's not, we're not holding a lot of money, and there are always change orders. When we open up those walls, we're going to be moving to the oldest section of the building to do the renovations next. You know, inevitably, we're, there's no way to know what's entirely behind the walls when we get into that area. So we have $100,000 there for those four change orders that will arise. There's $37,000 for landscaping. There's $35,000 left for some asbestos abatement that is not currently encumbered. And then we have $15,000 for unsuitable materials left in the budget to complete the project. So that gives you a full accounting as of, you know, this week, or where Mary and Greg believe that we're at. So I hope you find this to be helpful and clear. And if there's anything we can do to make it more readable or helpful to you, you know, your feedback's always appreciated.
Susan, thank you very much for arranging this. It's, they aren't necessarily new numbers. They're putting away that I find anyways here more digestible, you know? So but, and it took, it took some time to do that. And I thank Mary and Greg as well for assisting on this. Any questions?
Did a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Item E, I was hoping, well, I'll give you an update. Since our last meeting, I had sent out all call to staff to take a good hard look at their spaces and to let us know if there are areas that needed additional attention, if there was anything that was missed during the project so far, if there was anything that they really felt was important to providing the type of teaching and learning environment that we want for our students. And I got a great response. So they filled out a Google sheet, and the principals and I, along with Greg, have sat down today, and we started going through these requests so that we could identify what's already in the building project that they're, you know, asking about, what items were funded in the current year budget, and then we would have a list of things that were not funded anywhere. And so at the next meeting, I'll be able to bring you a recommendation for what you might want to consider for, to move forward on a warrant article, if you so choose, and how we would see using those impact fees to support, you know, additional furniture, pictures, and equipment for the buildings because that line item was underfunded, you know, knowingly underfunded. So we'll have that to you next week, and we're very excited. And we've added to those, that, things like the elementary school playground project that also went to the CIP, CPI, CCI, as well as, you know, the courtyard piece. We'll put that in there. We're just going to scoop everything into one, one document. And we'll present that to you at the next meeting so that we can begin to get our head around what you might want to move forward for a warrant article. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. So next up is the action item. So we've got approval of minutes from September 19, 2019. And I just, we can get into it, but I just noticed that it was just more of a extra language on the non-public minutes part of it. If you look at the next up, and you, thank you for these, breaker, these pages, too, makes it easier. Everybody there. So it says, "The board went into non-public session to discuss the status of pending litigation." It should be probably period, and because then it says, "And any matters identified." That last part doesn't really apply.
Yeah.
It doesn't say what. It's just sort of a, an additional statement. Other than that, I didn't see any changes.
I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
Second?
I'll second.
Any, any changes, questions? With that one change I noted, did we, did you add that, Kim, to your motion?
I said as amended.
As amended, great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
An animus? So then, there's the manifest. Sign those things. We have a motion to approve the manifest, please.
We'll get to Kim.
I move that we, that we approve all the manifests for a total of $2,703,827.71.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then we have a furniture donation.
That will be on the next.
The next one, okay.
The next agenda, yeah.
Going to make us wait?
Yeah, we didn't have all of our information together in time for presentation.
Yeah, sounds intriguing. Approval of superintendent guidelines, that's that funky font document that's in your materials.
I think it's behind the article in terms of the sections.
Yes, yep. Right there. So this is, this is essentially the document that we discussed at the retreat. I did add, as there was a comment, where's that paragraph? I, first of all, I amended, it said student achievement. I put student growth, development, and achievement as the priority, and added, can't find it now. Oh.
Come prepared to meetings was added.
That was.
On the third page.
Yeah, on the third page that, yep, so top bullet on the third page. And then the next bullet, actually, the last sentence where it says, you know, that open debate is encouraged, along with a free exchange of ideas. And there was just one policy, I think I added to it, on the list of policies on page two. They're all amended, they're all, they're right behind this document. It's the, I think it was the Board Employee Communications and GHC policy. It's there, if you want to read it. Having, having had this for over a week now, is, do we have any further thoughts on it, questions?
No, thanks again for compiling it, Mike. I appreciate having it. And I think it's a good foundation document again.
Okay. And this is a living document. Part of the whole thing with these weekly articles is to think, you know, about improving this. You know, I think eventually we'll get to some more affirmative, positive duties. So if there's no further questions, may entertain a motion to approve the board superintendent agreement.
So moves?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I, Michelle, what is the date today?
The third.
I'll catch you before you go. Why don't you sign my version? Move on. While we're doing that, just to keep things moving, the next thing is, we already talked about the superintendent and the board goals. Did anybody have any thoughts or further questions on those, having read them? If there is no further questions, I entertain a motion to approve both the school board goals and the superintendent goals.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Okay. Next up is the budget calendar.
Yeah, I did reach out to Mickey last night. I have not heard back from him. So I guess we can approve it now, or do we just?
We'll amend it later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be great. That way I can send it out to the team tomorrow when we kick off the process, so.
Great. I just wanted to thank Nate Luddy, took a look at this, too. Nate's a school business administrator. He's, took some time to look at it, too. And he thought that all the dates make sense. He, he just asked that we check those dates that involve the Budget Committee, and that's the question of Mickey. So does anybody have any questions on this calendar? I mean, it's something, it's, you know, we should certainly, there are some dates we really need to stick by, but if something comes up, if we need another meeting, we can always, you know, push things around. But it's really good to have this so we know what we're expecting and, you know, when meetings are.
And we did talk about maybe doing it a Saturday, right? Maybe just kind of, have we kind of?
In the future, we can. It just so happens that the Saturday that we would do that on, I have a personal obligation, yeah, mother-in-law's, my dear.
That's right. We talked about that.
It's a surprise party. It's out of town, so.
Probably watching, too.
You'd be watching. It's on YouTube.
Out of town, out of state. Out of town, out of state.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably not.
But it's so simple, lady. Could, could you remind me how it's different from the, because I, I know there were some important changes that were made that I remember at the time when I first saw it, that it, they seemed to make sense, but just so I know for potential impact on, say, the budget committee or something like that. What, what was the difference compared to last time? I wasn't here last time.
The budget calendar that was followed last year started the budget process at the same time we were opening school.
Right.
And so I felt it was important that my administrative team stay focused on opening school, which usually takes a couple of weeks as you're working out all of the, you know, kinks, as we say. You know, transportation, and I, I just wanted everybody to focus on getting the, the students settled and the staff getting settled into the building and into their routines. So, so that was one big, big change. And also so that we could, you know, have conversation about what our focus areas were. Normally, you know, we would have a conversation about what our priorities were, and, and in many ways, you've kind of solidified that between the goals we set for ourselves this year as well as the agreement we just signed, that we know that our focus is going to be on, you know, student growth, development and achievement. So that will inform, you know, how we, how we develop the budget proposal for you this year. So, so that was one. And then also, there was many, many, many integrated, you know, board and budget meetings that you had had before. So instead of doing that, we tried to just devote a couple of meetings where you would just focus strictly on, you know, understanding and processing, questioning, deliberating on the budget proposal that was presented. So we kind of collapsed some dates in order to be able to continue to meet some of the important deadlines that the budget committee had established. But one of the impacts that had was the budget committee wanted to have our adopted budget to them a week before it stated here. And so that's, that's what Elizabeth was checking on. So those are, I, I'd say those three things are the big, the big shifts between this and the year prior.
So if there's no further questions, I just seek a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-one budget calendar.
So moved?
Second.
I second it.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Thanks, Ma, Mary again, who was, helped put this together initially. Want to thank her for it. Thank you, Susan, for coming up to speed. And again, thank, thanks to Nate Luddy for putting yet another set of eyes on it. And Elizabeth, thank you for reaching out. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And then finally, under action items, we have the, the energy efficiency lighting upgrade lease resolutions. It's in your packet as well. Okay.
Okay, so.
First of all, is there, is there a timeframe for this? Is there like a deadline of this week or next week or?
Yes.
Is there, it's coming up?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so my understanding is that the board at some point last year wanted to take advantage of some energy conservation measures in the area of lighting. And, and so this is a lease to fund those so that you can pay for them out of the energy savings. It's called a performance contract. And so the idea is that by changing out the lights to more energy efficient, going from, I think they were fluorescent, to LED, that you would consume less energy. And with the money that you saved in your budget, that it would fund the payment, you know? So that's what a performance contract is. So that's what this arrangement is, so, but there's a finding, financing piece to that. And the way I understand it, through Mary, is that once you start the project, you have sixty days to finance it. And if you finance the work within the sixty days, then it's tax exempt. If it's not within the sixty days, then it can't be tax exempt. So for a portion of the work that's been completed, it's beyond the sixty day period, so this gets to the deadline. So by approving the resolutions as they're written now, it allows us to enter into, it would be two leases, one tax exempt for the majority of it and the other for the non-tax exempt portion of the lease. So I would need for you to approve these resolutions so that, so that I can sign the contracts, so that we can move forward with funding it because the work has already taken place.
I move that the resolution entitled Resolution to Authorize Lease Purchase of Energy Performance Contract Lighting and retrofit upgrades in the principal amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand be adopted in the form presented to, to this meeting.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, there's a schedule on the last two pages. And, and just, and I also understand that we can at any time, we could pay down this upfront, you know, or over two years or three years or whatever you ultimately decide to, decide to.
Yeah, there's no penalties.
Right. Any questions?
So is the one side of the page, the, the, each side is the two different?
Yes.
Two different.
Ones that you're talking about.
Yeah.
One is for the, the rate for the tax exempt, who's three point seven nine percent, and the rate for the non-tax is four point seven two.
Any further comments or questions? Okay. We have a motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. I don't know of a reason to go into non-public.
It was related to a security situation that you had asked me to.
Oh, yes, we do have a reason to go into non-public. Yes.
And we need to sign the boys' papers.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you guys want us to sign you papers? You need.
Quick, get up on camera, else we're.
All right. I was going to say.
Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Owen Taylor, God Junior.
Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you gotta, so I didn't hear, you're going to play lacrosse, is that the idea?
We, we have a, for our first year's classroom, we have six points to help out or, or span the community.
Just for, just for the enjoyment of it.
Yeah, like anyone who's bored, you know?
So all you need is a picture?
I think so.
I believe so, yeah.
All right. I think you need an agenda. Over the years, you've always asked for an agenda. I think, I think we have to sign it in the seven years, yeah, that I've been here. Somebody has, one of us has to sign it.
Can you just do a selfie with one of them?
He can do all of, he could do, they could stand right here and do a selfie with all of us, I bet that would count.
A selfie with the agenda and the board?
It's Mr. Godette, right?
Everybody wants one.
All right.
I don't have my phone to take the picture.
No, you got, they have their phones, they're teenagers. All right, come up and take pictures. Because then we have to go into non-public, you have to get out.
Here, you can hold the agenda up. Thank you.
You're giving the superintendent your phone. That's great. Come on, yeah, you might as well, then you can share it.
You're so tall, I can't round out.
That's fine.
You can stand right in front of me.
Here, all, here we go. Ready? Here we go. Ready?
Perfect.
Thank you, guys.
I want this earth to do bunny ears.
Bunny ears?
Yeah.
They deserve it.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Okay, yes, I'm seeking a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman two, dash, little i.
So moved?
Second.
Roll call, vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
Ms. Weisach question?
Aye.
Ms. McKitty?
Aye.
Aye.
Not yet.
And good night.